We'll call the meeting to order for Wyconica County Council work session, budget work session for Tuesday, May 7th, 2024. We have, first on the agenda, we have the airport. And we appreciate everybody being here today. Mr. Rudy, good to see you.
Good afternoon.
We will give you, open the floor and let you give us an overview if you'd like. And then we'll, if we have questions, we'll get into that as well.
I'd be happy.
So, um, the airport has, um...
Just for the recording, just tell us who you are before you speak, just so that we got it in the record.
Pam Olend, Finance Director.
Thank you.
So, um, the main variances associated with the airport are, on the revenue side, there are two main ones. The appropriation is going up to balance out the budget. And CARES funding is going down now that COE, no longer receiving CARES funding from the federal government that ran out in fiscal '24. As such, the, it is estimated that during the fiscal '24 audit, the airport will no longer be considered an enterprise fund. It will be moved over to a governmental fund due to the fact that it receives an appropriation and it's budgeted to receive an appropriation. The main variances in their budget relate to, and this is across pretty much every department, salary, pension, OPEB, health insurance, health center, and workers' comp. Those areas, salary, for most departments, we have done a 5% increase. It's a 4% COLA, which meant the scale moved 4%. And then every person on the scale moved to the right on the scale by 1%. So basically, for, we don't have steps on the general scale, but we are making it so that the longevity is being recognized. You're not just increasing the scale and staying at the same spot longevity-wise. For fiscal '25, we had made the decision, due to the significant funding we have in OPEB, to take the funding that we have historically put in OPEB, put it in the pension, so that we can try to get the percentage up on our pension as the fact that we are over 100% funded on our OPEB. Health insurance, there are a couple things driving health insurance in all departments. And that is, Care First is predicting a 7% increase. We are doing the full 7%. Even with the health center, there is a line item for health center because until we actually achieve those savings, they're both costs to us. In addition, we are adding back the ability for employees who couldn't have spousal coverage because they started after us eliminating that coverage. We are adding back spousal coverage for fiscal '25. And any new employees, we also have funded health insurance for that as well. Health center costs, as I already talked about it, that was the discussion with council back February, March timeframe to fund the concept of the Everside/Marathon and go in with the Board of Education. I actually talked with the board yesterday. They're looking at an early July opening for that health center for their employees. And we would be able to slide in as soon as we have funding and can start making payments and sign our contract. We can't sign our contract until council funds the concept. So the contract will not be signed until council, until this budget is passed with that funding in there. Workers' comp is due to workers' comp increase as budgeted. ARF services went down. The decision was made in fiscal '24 that we were going to bring our ARF services in-house. And so council appropriated the funding for six months for the hire of employees for ARF. As such, the airport has been working on hiring those positions, getting those positions trained. And so our contract will run out in October...
October 31st.
With the current provider. And we will be providing that all in-house. So that is, that is the other increase in salary for them is because we now have full year funding for those positions. But that's being offset by the fact that we won't be funding the ARF company for the remainder of the fiscal year. Professionals...
If I could just interject, sorry, Tony Rudy, Airport Director. With, with bringing the ARF people in-house, there is savings that we realized from contracting it. And, and just, I know we're talking budget now, but just for a little background there too, it also enables us to have employees, airport employees at the airport evenings and weekends where we hadn't in the past.
And then we have some growth in the bond principal and interest line item because we have been borrowing for the runway extension over the last couple of years. And each year, we only, in the year of borrowing, we only recognize interest expense for that first, first year. So last year, we borrowed for the airport. And as such, we only budgeted for interest. This year, we have to budget for the principal and interest associated with that borrowing. The last one that also increased is we increased our cover, our local law enforcement coverage because the funding from the federal government has been reduced. And as such, we now will be covering all of those costs. But we are still required by the FAA to have local law enforcement presence when there is a commercial service at the airport.
So that, that was a reimbursable program and that did go away for this federal fiscal year. There is some talk about trying to get it back in for this federal fiscal year. So we'll have to see how that goes. But I'm also planning on talking with TSA and meeting with the sheriff's office to find out if there's some alternate arrangements we can make. But as of right now, we're required to have them in the terminal at the checkpoint whenever the screening checkpoint is open.
So that is the, um, the airport fund budget. In addition, there are capital projects proposed for next year. $1.6 million worth of Pago, about $4.5 million worth of federal grant, $313,000 of state grant, and $2.9 million of other. Some of that other is, still should be determined. And we're looking for the funding source associated with that other. If council adopts the proposed capital budget as it stands, that means that we would have to come back to council to get the funding source approved. So we would not be able to just unilaterally make the decision that that funding source is the appropriate funding source. If we decide that we, we get another grant, because we haven't anticipated that as a grant and it hasn't been recognized to council, we have to come to council to get it approved. If we can find a funding source with the state or some other source, then we will come to the council for that approval. And that is a summary of the airport.
All right. Any questions?
So I guess, in a nutshell, and you probably just explained it all, but there is a transfer of about 3 million from the, from, from operating to the airport this year?
Yes, that's the, that is the change between, we no longer are receiving CARES funding. So basically, that is being offset now by appropriation. And as I have stated a couple times in previous council meetings, and that fiscal '24, when the audit is released, the airport will become like the Civic Center and it will move from enterprise to governmental because it can no longer self-sustain. Like the Civic Center, airports cannot afford their capital requirements.
No airports really can.
Yes. And same with the Civic Center. Colas, you know, those types of facilities as governmental entities, you, you can cover your operating costs. You can cover your people there to keep the doors open, keep the lights on, all that kind of stuff. But to keep those buildings and those facilities in the condition that they need to be in to utilize, those are something that need to come from the main government source. And as such, they have to, that is why we ask for an appropriation to balance the budget. So basically, we went from $1.1 million of CARES funding last year and $1.3 million worth of appropriation to $3 million of appropriation totally. So again, there's some growth, but there's growth because of all of those costs that I just explained.
And you try not to, I know, we tried not to get caught up with the same thing you get when you have grants. Don't ever think that the grant is going to allow you to continue with those, that funding source forever. You have to anticipate it's going to go away. So I thought we were trying to be very careful that most of what we were using for the, for the federal funds was really based to address capital expenses as opposed to operating expenses.
Not in the airport. The CARES funding associated with the airport was operating expenses and that was covering. And again, all it did was delay the timing. If COVID hadn't happened and CARES funding hadn't happened, probably '21, '22 would have been the timeframe. We would have moved the airport from being an enterprise to being a governmental fund. Because we had those funds for the three, four years that we had them, that forestalled that movement because we were able to balance our budget without needing an appropriation. We now will need an appropriation and not that, so we don't want to have to go through another national problem like COVID to, to necessitate needing those federal funds or getting those federal funds. So as such, the local government is responsible for maintaining the airport.
Of the capital leasing, it's about $111,000. What does that entail, Tony? Just wasn't sure.
I'm assuming it's the vehicles yet. So, yeah, that's the vehicles. That is the vehicles. You will see there's $111,000 for vehicles for them. And then there is a corresponding offset of sale of vehicles of $88,000. So the net is only $23,000 to the bottom line that it's costing us to lease vehicles at the airport. Due to discussions with enterprise, the, there is some life left. And it's the optimal time to sell some of these vehicles that we have. And as such, we're going to sell them and then be able to lease all brand-new vehicles. And again, keep our maintenance costs down. And so for $23,000, we're basically getting a new fleet out at the airport.
And that's really the kind of question I, because we've never really tracked the leasing since it got into play because it's, oh, you're going to have to let it fit, you know, you have to let this go out for four, five years.
This is year five. This is, this is the first year that I've seen, since I've taken it, where we're seeing that significant, so you will see significant revenue dollars on, on the revenue side to offset the expense. Yes, it is still expensive to own vehicles. But the difference is, is that we're owning one, two, three, four-year-old vehicles versus owning 15, 20-year-old vehicles and having to put a lot of capital costs into them to keep them maintained. And this is the first year that I have actually sat down with enterprise myself and went through with our, our rep. And we went through every department and every vehicle and talked about the optimal time to be changing them. And so again, if, how many vehicles do you guys have? I did not count that with me. So I, sorry, I'm putting you on the spot.
Tony, come on. Just guess, we'll never know.
I believe seven, and we're adding one because of our core of your people.
So for $23,000, net $23,000, we're going to have seven vehicles out there that are in peak condition versus having seven vehicles that are seven, eight, nine years old.
Yeah, well, I, and again, I'm not going to beat the dead horse.
You and I disagree on the leasing program.
My last car I had for nine years.
I understand.
It was in great shape all nine years.
I understand, but the difference is, is that we, not having those vehicles be in peak condition means that our employees then are also not able to do their jobs. So, because if that vehicle is down...
I get it.
What are they doing? How are they, how are they doing their job? So again, I view $23,000 for seven vehicles as being a really good return to make sure our fleet stays young.
We'll have a whole work session on leased vehicles sometime in the future. Something we look forward to.
Yeah. So this is, again, this is the year, this is the first year I'm seeing significant revenue because we have hit that sweet spot where enterprise is telling us across the fleet, here are all the vehicles we think you should sell. And this is the optimal amount that we think we can get you. And they are conservative in those estimates. So I am hopeful, I don't budget on hope though. I am hopeful that we will collect more in revenue than what I've budgeted. This is the low end of the number that they have provided. On the, so I have budgeted the high end for the expense.
Right.
And I've budgeted the low end on the revenue. And I've done that across the board.
Sounds good. Does anybody have any other questions on the three- or five-year lease?
So our leases are typically structured as a five-year lease. We own, unlike what you think of as a lease, you know, you go to a store and you have a lease and you have to turn the vehicle in. We never have to turn the vehicle in. If, when we're done making payments, if we don't want to exchange it, it is our vehicle.
To sell.
So, to sell, to replace, to, we can also sell it at three years when we still have a five-year, two more years and bring in a new vehicle because they say, hey, you can get more for this on the resale market right now than what it's going to cost you to re-lease another vehicle. So again, the term lease is technically what it is. But it is ultimately a purchase of these vehicles. We are the owner of the vehicle. And at any point in time, if we decide that we don't want to replace the vehicle, if we've made all the payments on it, then that vehicle is ours. And we don't have to replace it and we don't have to move on. And there are some decisions that were made this year across departments and I will not be able to tell you which departments. But I know in reviewing each of them, that there are some departments that they made the decision that this vehicle is perfectly outfitted for what they need right now. It is not costing them anything more. It's fully paid for and thus, we want to keep it. And so, and those decisions are respected by enterprise. You know, they're ultimately there to advise us as to what they think is the most financially prudent. But they also don't understand our day-to-day operations. And sometimes it's more financial, it's more operationally prudent to keep the vehicle that we have.
Any other questions for airport?
Any other comments, Tony? Okay, all right. Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Next item we have on the agenda, we have is executive administration.
So on this one, now this is where I, you put on your thing, Department 5 as the little, I'm assuming those were department numbers. So I literally just looked at executive administration. I will comment on a couple other things associated with the budget as a whole. But, um, like every other department, salary, pension, OPEB, health insurance, health center, all are impacted by the decisions, overall decisions being made. In addition, we are looking at succession planning within the administrative staff. So we currently have two administrative staff in the department. We're looking at succession planning as to whether or not one of them might retire. There is, there is nothing on the table, but there is, you know, they're, they're both retirement eligible. And as such, it would behoove us to have more of an office manager structure and have another person brought in to start learning the job. And so that is the two changes being suggested for the department is that we bring in a third administrative position to partly succession plan and partly just due to the volume of the department. In addition, the only other change is there's about $8,000 of operating expense growth. That's across office supplies, fuel, conferences, and, you know, just due to overall growth in cost. Those are, you know, with where everything is in the world, $8,000 across the department is what that is.
Any questions?
I did want to say, I apologize, I, I think I just interrupted somebody, but I don't know who I did. Count, we discussed in the last year, over the last year, the concept of a grant administrator. And that position is actually being proposed and it's proposed in the finance budget.
Saw that. Good. Good.
So the reason for putting it in finance, just so council is aware, is that ultimately, the charter says the finance director is responsible for all expenses. So if this person is going to be helping us find funds and helping us track funds, it makes logical sense that it falls up under finance.
And what does leave payout?
So, um, we have, and we've come to this council because of it a couple times. I'll use HR as an example. We had a longtime employee retire from HR. And we have never in the past budgeted for the payout associated of a longtime employee having their leave paid out. So we went and looked across departments, especially the smaller departments where it's more impactful because HR only has so many employees. And so when that position retired, that position, there was no, there was only two ways to fund it. One was to keep the position open, which means then the department is harmed because they can't, um, you know, have their job being, that job can't be filled because we have to use the funds for the rest of the fiscal year. Or we have come to council in the past and asked for a budget amendment to that department out of contingency. So we looked at smaller departments, and smaller as in the number of employee departments, that have eligible employees to retire. And if they have sizable leave balances that might require a payout, we made an estimate. So you won't, you won't see leave payout in, like the sheriff's office.
Or corrections.
Or corrections, because they typically have salary savings that can cover because they have empty positions. But HR typically is close to full employment all year. If that's the case, if somebody retires in HR, then there's no ability to make that payment without making a budget amendment. And so we were trying to forestall some of those, the need to do those in the future.
So what figure on the leave payout?
Pardon me?
Use your, your mic.
What was the figure on the leave payout? I couldn't find it.
For...
Budget for?
$5,488. In that department, in my department.
I noticed that the executive's department and the finance was the same. You know, they're both not large departments.
It's, it is an estimate. It's an estimate. Because again, um, we have two people eligible to retire in the executive's office. We have one person eligible to retire in the finance department. And as such, we made an estimate and so...
So if there's...
If it's a little more, if it's a little less, if we either have to come to council for a little bit more or a little bit less, it won't be spent. Or it won't be spent at all if nobody retires. But again, it's more of to protect the small departments, to allow them to have the ability to hire if somebody who is a long-term employee retires and we have to pay out their leave.
But you could come to the council and ask for contingency money if you had to.
We could.
So if this was struck from the budget, it wouldn't make any big difference?
No.
Other than internally?
It, it is looking at the things that we have come to you in the past that are more routine and trying to anticipate those in the budget. So if they were to be struck, it just takes that much longer than to hire a new employee because we can't hire an employee until we have the funding. So...
But it doesn't take that long to come to the council and ask for the funding? I mean, how long does it take?
It can take up to a month. So if, if you were an employee that was offered a job, is a month a reasonable time to wait for that job to be open? I can't answer that question. I'm just posing a hypothetical.
I don't know why you can't hire them anyway.
We don't have the funding.
You still have some funding for, let's say, the first, the first month of their employment, don't you?
Nope. So again, in the HR situation, that person had significant leave that had to be paid out.
I see what you're saying there.
And as such, that significant leave ate up their salary for the remainder of the fiscal year. There was no salary available to pay that person, to pay for a new person because they would have immediately been over budget because we paid out 100% of that person's remainder of their salary for the year.
But you know this person's going to retire before they leave and you also know what their payout's going to be. So you could come to the council before they have gone, before they have left.
So the second, the secondary, yes and no. So yes, we can for that specific person. But if we're trying to hire somebody and we also need to change that salary number, either higher because of the position control document, so that's then two steps that we have to wait.
I just look at this as, you know, we've got a lot of unfilled positions that we fund. And I look at this as just being more money out in limbo that, you know, that's in the budget.
Again, it is in the budget on departments that do not have the flexibility of the larger departments and vacancies. Again, that is what it is.
Thank you.
Yep.
What is the, what position is it that you said was being changed to a succession position?
So we're looking at, let me make sure I'm stating this right.
Because you've listed them both as retitle and regrade. I'm not quite so sure one of them is even a retitle or regrade.
So, so the re, we don't typically move somebody's position number. So we have a position currently filled. That position has a position number. We want to up the grade associated with that position. And as such, that becomes a retitle, regrade. Thus, in adding the additional position, we have to then find another, we have to create another position that has the old title that that one previously had. Because again, the way we have always historically done it is that the position number follows the person. And so there is currently a person in the executive office coordinator position. As such, we want to change that position to be an executive office manager.
So does the new salary, is that, is the new salary what the, what the individual in administration will be getting paid?
So on the executive...
Is the new salary that will be given to the new employee?
So the executive office manager, that line, we're recommending a salary of $64,380. The new position, as we have historically done, we fund the position at midpoint. Since we don't yet have a person, we have to advertise, we have to find somebody. And so to allow flexibility up to midpoint, we do that with all vacant positions. As this is a brand-new position, it would be, it would be totally vacant until the budget is allowed to be passed, or budget passes and July 1st comes because it can't be hired until July 1st. We are funding that position at midpoint of that grade to allow the availability to hire somebody up to midpoint.
Which is 63?
No, 53, 246.
246. I just would, I would think that on the manager's position, without making it a 16% increase, you just make it a 5% increase like everyone else is getting.
Because they're getting a grade change and so with a...
I understand they're getting a grade change, but...
So now you're saying that they're going from a position, so on their grade, if all they did was, all you did was 5%, they would actually move backwards on the scale. Instead of them going straight up, 5%...
Are they going to move back? I would suggest that if you're going to do a grade change, you do it with a new employee.
No, because we don't want the new employee to be the office manager. We want the person who is currently in our department, who has experience, be the office manager.
So this would become, this, this position would all of a sudden become the other employee's pay.
Existing employee.
Others, when one employee retires, the other employee would be going to this.
No, 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 no. We, at this point in time, we're not sure that we would have the new employee move up to office manager. It depends on who we hire. Do we hire somebody who is, um, 25, relatively brand-new in a career? Or are we hiring somebody with lots of experience as an office manager? Then maybe, yes, they would be promoted to office manager. But right now, what we're trying to do is we're trying to have an office manager position. We're also trying to have a, an executive office coordinator. That's, because currently, both positions are called executive office coordinators.
This is another new position?
No, that's the position, we have two right now.
That's the one for 53, 246.
No. We have two positions in the administrative, in the executive office right now.
I'm with you there.
They are both executive office coordinators. One is staying an executive office coordinator. The other one, we're asking to be the grade change and the title change to executive... The other one, we're asking to be the grade change and the title change to executive office manager. So we would have coordinator and manager. And then we would hire a third position, which would be below the coordinator position at executive office assistant. The assistant is a grade 35, the coordinator is a grade 36. We currently have two grade 36s. And we want to go have a grade 37. So we want to have a 35, 36, and 37 for succession planning and for the volume of work that's in that office.
We've never been a real fan of a chief financial officer in the executive office.
But that's not what, that.
Changing the name.
It's changing the name, so.
But that's.
No, it.
But that title was never even really created.
So.
The title was put into effect, and it was not put into effect legitimately.
Okay, so we, we have a bank of positions in the system that aren't active. That was one of the bank that is not active. It's not used, it's not, and it's never going to be used. So why not make it used for something that we want? Not a chief financial officer, a executive office assistant. And so the original title is irregardless, it does not mean anything to what it is now in that instance, in a vacant position that has never been activated. That position has never been activated, is not used since I have been in this position.
Will you have job descriptions for these new positions, executive office assistant, executive office manager? Do you have those?
They're being worked on and being provided.
Okay. All right. Any else? Any other questions?
That's my question.
Just get, just get the mic near you.
All right, thank you. Just sort of going to, I think, Joe's concern about the, the expense about leave payout. Correct me if I'm wrong, just, just so that everybody understands, like, what can happen that, because you said if no one leaves, then it won't be spent, right? Is that what you said, something to that effect?
It would be sitting there as available budget.
As available, which means that then in turn you could, or the department could request for you to then transfer that money to capital expenses, operating expenses, whatever, without actually notifying council?
It can be transferred within the department to be utilized, yes.
In other areas, besides leave payout.
Correct.
Thank you.
Angie, would you say who you are for the public?
Oh, yeah, sorry. My name is Anjali Chitell. I'm the internal auditor.
Thank you. They might think there's eight elected people.
Sorry, sorry, I apologize.
Thanks, that's good. Yes, Jeff?
Pam, this community promotion, what, what is that? Is that?
Typically, that is, um, I believe, and I, off the top of my head, I don't remember the exact things, but I, I want to say there's some legit expenses in there.
Dues and subscriptions.
Or may, I think it's dues and subscriptions primarily to Mako, maybe? And I think that's the biggest one that's in there, is Mako dues and subscriptions.
Mako, Nako.
If it is different than that, I will let council know.
Well, it is, it's Mako, Nako, it's.
And that is where they have historically been posted, is in that line item.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes.
Can I, this is about community promotion, is that correct?
Yeah.
That we're on? So somebody, another council member had this question regarding that. And so a lot of it is Mako for the dues and subscriptions, but then there's also a line item called contingency slash other.
And that has historically always been in there. That is where, um, you know, we get a request from the, the public that makes sense for the executive department to be funding. We don't have a very big contingency in the executive office. It's more of the community has come and asked for something, and we need $500, we need $1,000 to spend out of there.
Yeah, so just, just as an example, one of them is Roadie Joe's and Bar, and I don't know what the rest of it is, but Roadie Joe's Bar and something, out of the contingency other in the.
I will say, I know last year, fiscal '23, the executive used that contingency other to have the, have the employees go to the Shorebirds game. So, and it has been used for that, for a, a employee morale type thing in the past as well.
How much was spent at Roadie Joe's?
Um, that particular day, $115.93.
So a lot of times, if the director of administration takes department heads out or is having a meeting or something like that, it could have been pulled from there. So if it was some sort of, like, employee morale or something like that.
Yes, yeah. I just wanted them to understand that it wasn't just dues and subscriptions, that there were other.
It is, the largest part of it is dues and subscriptions, but there are other things, and I will know.
But thank you for pointing that exact one out.
It was just the only one that, like, kind of popped out right there.
Sure, understood.
Questions?
No.
All right. Local management board would be next, then.
Yes. Tim is here. So local management board is its own separate fund. It is a fully, well, there is a small appropriation to the local management board that helps pay for the salary of the director of the local management board. Otherwise, the department is fully grant-funded. Yes, the growth, there is growth in that department because we are anticipating applying for and hopefully receiving additional grants than we have had in the past. And as such, we've built the budget with those grants in there. Now, as the fact that it is 100% grant-funded, unlike general fund, funding, if we don't get those grants, it doesn't get spent. The revenue doesn't come in, the expense doesn't happen. So as such, if the grant does not happen, their budget, we don't tip, we don't do budget amendments that bring the budget down for grants not arriving, but because the grant hasn't arrived, we don't spend. Because each one of their grants has a program number or a project number on it, and if they don't get the grant, that project number isn't utilized. There's no spending in it because there's no revenue in it, and then there's no ability to put anything in there.
I have a question. Um, the lease, they moved out of the building.
Correct.
Building. Are you leasing that spot?
Yes.
And that is built into the grants.
That's built into the grants?
Yes.
Because I was trying to figure out how, I was trying to figure out how we're paying for that. They're here in a free building, and they moved across the street.
Well, it is 100% grant-funded. Again, the only piece that gets an county appropriation is a portion of the director's salary. And not even the full director's salary.
Yeah.
Not even, and it doesn't cover the full director's salary and benefits. It is a portion to balance out their budget from what can't be covered by having grant.
Okay.
Any other questions here? Yes.
Can you expand on the Time to Care Act? He's got funding in his budget of $351.
Every department has some Time to Care Act funding in it.
Where to start on Time to Care?
I wish I, no, I'm sorry. Time to Care. So the state passed legislation such that employees, it's not even technically employees, people who work in the state of Maryland are eligible for leave benefits, wherever, no matter who they worked for, as long as they worked a set number of hours. So if we hire somebody tomorrow, and three days from now, they have something that qualifies under Time to Care, so it primarily starts with federal FMLA law, but it is an expanded law. It allows for additional reasons for you to ask for leave. If you have worked enough hours at your prior employment, we as the county are required to cover you taking time off and continue to pay your salary for up to 12 weeks. Now.
But it's not a full salary, though.
It is up to $1,000 per person per week. We had come to council, oh, August timeframe, to discuss the concept and discuss whether or not we wanted to join a consortium to do a bid on that. We ultimately made the decision that the upfront costs associated with that consortium were too high, and it is primarily being funded by boards of education. Now, we are a population that is diverse. We have young, family-age women. We have middle-aged women. I'm pointing to myself, I am one. We have men across all the way, you know, throughout, but the largest usage of Time to Care, most likely as what it has been experienced in other states that have implemented this, is maternity leave and paternity leave. What do board of education have? A lot of young employees that are maybe looking to start a family. So our concern was that that consortium, that the cost might actually be higher than what the state is charging. We are looking to go with one of our benefit providers, and they will set up a state-approved plan that will allow us to meet the requirements. But the difference between having a state-approved plan that we run with them versus going with the state plan is you have to forward fund 15 months with the state of Maryland. So you, for 15 months, we have to be sending money to the state of Maryland per employee, per month. Or we have our own plan, and we only pay for administrative costs and usage. That is more financially, what we feel will be more financially prudent for the county. The other part of Time to Care, unfortunately, this supersedes any leave banks that you have. We may not utilize their leave banks up to the $1,000 a week. We have to provide it and not draw down on, on their leave banks. As such, now, if they, they make more than $1,000 a week, and they want to supplement that to their full employment number, that is built into the state law, and we are allowed to draw down on their leave banks at that point. But this is the first, um, funding for anything. So we have made an estimate through discussions with our proposed provider to, as to how much it may cost per department for us to have this. And it, it is a total estimate. Until we actually have some utilization and know what we're going to encounter, we, it, it's an estimate. And could the estimate be $1,000 higher per department or lower per department? Yeah. We had to pick a point, and that, the point is what we put in the budget.
And in.
And that made it as clear as mud.
In, in two of the states that they've done this, within two years, they've had to more than double the contribution because the claims outpaced the contributions.
And that was also part of our reasoning is, is again, if we are, we would only be paying for our claims, we would not be funding a statewide pool. We would be funding a pool for our employees and our employees only. We felt that was more financially advantageous than joining the state pool.
Any other questions? Thank you, Lauren. Next to what we have on the list, oh, by the, I'm sorry, Ms. Font, did you have anything you wanted to add? Apologize.
No, I think Pam did a good job summarizing it.
Yeah, 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 yeah. You've done great work.
Yeah, thank you.
How did your computer, how did your computer contributions work out?
They're all gone.
All gone, yeah, yeah. Good. How many people, how many families do you think you served?
Um, well, it was 750 devices, so.
Great.
That's the many households we served.
Any idea of where, primarily where they came from, or was it all, all over?
Um, if I had to venture, I would say probably the Haitian Creole community picked up the most of them.
Well, it's good to see that it's there and that they're coming in because they recognize the fact that it's a need, and they'll take advantage of it, hopefully, so.
If they have it again, we'll probably apply for it again.
Wonderful, thanks a lot. Doing really good work.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, on the agenda, we have pensions and, I know you talked on them briefly, Pam, pensions and retirement, workers' comp, liability insurance.
So.
Before we get started, I want to answer a previous question, if that's okay, Bunky Lefman, Director of Administration. The $115 at Roadie Joe's was for a luncheon we had for a student that rendered aid to another student that was hurt badly. So we took that student out to watch.
Okay.
That's what that was for.
Good for memory, Bunk.
Thank you. So the big growth in the actual Department 40, pensions and retirement, that is where some of our deferred comp plan actually gets paid out at the beginning of the fiscal year. We actually budgeted for it this year. And the, the second side is vacation payout. That is a, that is a number associated with actually our audit. So when we have to budget, or when we have to expense our accrual on the books to set up our, how much leave liability we have on the books, this is where that gets posted. In addition, you will see in the liability insurance department, I just want to make sure I have that one in front of me.
No.
You will see a line item that's new for $600,000 labeled arbitrage. So.
Bad news. What was that?
That is under the Department 42, under liability insurance and workers' comp. It is called arbitrage. Arbitrage is a federal concept. It is when we borrow money at a tax-exempt rate. So when we are borrowing for projects that are considered tax-exempt, for things like school construction, road construction, if we're doing something at, typically, the airport is not considered tax-exempt. That's what we're typically borrowing at a taxable rate. The reason why it's considered a taxable rate is 100% of its utilization is being utilized by external entities, and those external entities are leasing it from us. So under federal law, the airport is borrowed at a taxable rate. Most of our other projects are borrowed at a tax-exempt rate. We got incredibly lucky a couple of years ago to be able to borrow at an incredibly low rate because interest rates were incredibly low, and so we borrowed at this tax-exempt rate. Federal government doesn't want you just to borrow money to save it and make interest. As such, now that interest rates are going up, we have this money sitting in the bank because projects take time to come to fruition. School construction takes a while, the sheriff's office takes a while to build, and as such, those things are now earning higher interest rates than what we borrowed it at. And as for that difference, we owe that difference to the federal government. You do not owe it in the first couple of years, but at about year three, we will start owing if those funds are not expended all the way. We have put an estimate through discussion with the company that does our calculation for arbitrage on the books for how much it's going to cost us in fiscal '25 to pay out this arbitrage that we, we will owe to the federal government. We will be required to pay it. So this $600,000, again, is an estimate because that, those numbers are still fluctuating, the timeline is still in, as, as we spend down, there is different timelines associated with spend down, but we felt it was financially prudent to put this number on the books now so that if we have to pay it out, and when we pay some of it out, hopefully not the full 600, but when we have to pay it out, we already have a budget for it. That is the biggest change in those departments, is the $600,000 associated with arbitrage.
Elaborate, can you elaborate on what you were talking about with the deferred comp payout?
So we have a deferred comp plan as, that basically allows for a, if we, when we put money into the 457 plan, the council and we budget for a 20% match. That 20% match happens in July. That 27% match happens in July. For certain employees, they're budgeted in one of these line items, or they're expended one of these line items versus being expended in a different department, and in the past, we haven't budgeted for it in that department. So we budgeted for it to have the two match.
So, where are we with, I don't know if you touched on it when you first started, where are we with OPEB and OPEB funding?
So OPEB, we're at about 120% funded. So that is why we made the decision, and we're only at about 70% funded for our pension. So we made the decision to utilize the additional OPEB to not fund in fiscal '25 any funding associated with OPEB. A 70%-
We're shifting that same funding total so that it's all going to pension.
A 70% funded pension is okay. It is not outstanding, but if you look at governments across the country and pensions across the country, 70% is, is a okay funding level. That is not a funding level that I want us to have. I would like us to be more in the 80% funding level. And if we could get, if we could balance out that we have about 80% funding in OPEB and 80% funding in pension, we're doing good. So right now, we are so overfunded in OPEB for the county to continue to send money over there, and you can't get it back. You can't, you can't say, oh, we overfunded OPEB, we don't need it there, we want to move it to the pension. Once it's shipped there, by law, we can't move it for, except for, to spend on OPEB costs. So we're making the administrative decision for fiscal '25 to fund more into pension, nothing into OPEB to try to bring those percentages more in line.
So what's our pension level right now?
70%.
And this will make it 80%?
It will bring it up. I am not, I am not confident that it will get us all the way to 80%, but it will bring us up and closer to 80%.
Where were we at three or five years ago?
It has bounced around significantly.
Yeah.
Due to market conditions, it has bounced around in my timeframe. And right before my timeframe, there was administrative decisions that actually impacted the pension that took it down to like, close to, like in the 50s.
Or 53, yeah.
So we are trying to correct some of those-
Decisions.
Decisions. And the problem is, is that the pension number and the requirement for pension is much higher than what you need to fund for OPEB. So for every dollar that we take out of OPEB, it doesn't give us a full dollar on the pension because the, the cost of the pension is so much higher than what the cost of OPEB is. So again, unfortunately, some decisions were made prior to this administration and even prior to my arrival in this position that have impacted the pension, and we are still trying to grow that number and keep it sustainably grow.
I think those, I think those issues came about when we were in the recession.
That was some of it, and then there was also some changes right before I took this role that made some, that made a big impact.
I thought Madam Executive, but she, I may be wrong, said it was 60% funded. She had told me that a while back, but it's-
It was until we got our new numbers. So we were, so for the decisions that were made, yeah, they went up to 70.
Again-
It's a guesstimate.
It's, it's, you know, the actuaries are looking at you at a point in time. And that point in time, the number was, is what it is, is that it does fluctuate, we still try to give funding, and we are, again, my brain says 80% is a good number based on everything that I have, have seen and, you know, would I love us to have 100% funding in both? Yes.
But that's our goal, right? Like, that's where we should shoot for.
So the difference between 100% funding means that you are basically going to pay out your tail all in one year. That's not how a pension works. So, and you're not going to have anything new being added, and you're not going to have any new people adding, and you're not going to have any new enrollment, and you're not, again, so a pension, an actuarial evaluation is a point in time. One day, they're looking at it at June 30th, at the end of every fiscal year. Do you have enough money if you were to shut down your pension on June 30th? Well, obviously, we didn't shut down our pension on June 30th because, you know, we're now eight months past that date. We only had enough money to fund 70% of our obligation. Because you're doing a point in time, but you're looking at something that we're not intending to shut down, do you need to have 100% funding at all times? Probably not, but-
That's the goal.
That is the goal. It is not something, again, the fact that we are as highly funded on OPEB, if you look across the country, if you look across the counties in our area, OPEB is not as highly funded. Pensions fluctuate.
Any other questions? Okay. The last item we have for today, at least on this, was public health, but we are way ahead of ourselves.
Well, I can attempt to answer questions. They are planning to come over. I can attempt to answer questions, and if we then have to hold for anything following, we can.
Sure.
But I can start.
Is it Matthew?
Yeah.
Can you text?
Well, let's see first, maybe we can just resolve this. Does anybody have any questions in reference to public health?
So I did want to say, we budgeted, so in accounting, you have to budget for full revenue and full expense. You don't net those off on either side. So we budgeted on the revenue side on $968,000 receiving for the Verizon building. So that is new revenue associated with having the health department because we bought the Verizon building, and we're going to receive a full year's worth of lease for that building. In addition, we budgeted about $163,000 for maintenance costs and electric because we own the building, we now have to pay those costs. We have started receiving payments because, as you know, it's being managed by SVN, and they are doing the management, so they are sending us the net check. We are booking at gross because that is accounting requirements, but we have started receiving payments associated with that. The other major increases is that the health department, we pay, we pay to the state health department salaries. We have to accept whatever the state says these people are getting as raises. Same with the elections. We don't have any control over what amount the state is going to pay them, we just have to fund it. So that is going up $324,000. But they are giving us $160,000 in additional indirect cost, so that number is being netted off. So our growth in expenditures in total is about 300 and some thousand dollars, but we're growing revenue by $968,000 by having the Verizon building. We are going to be spending the next year. We have put in the capital budget, 200, no, $50,000 to do engineering and planning on that building, paying for that out of Pago so that the, we will have the next year to make that decision as to what's the best space layout, and then we can start constructing that when the lease is over. And they can then move in after that.
Sorry, clarity on the Verizon rental, that's, is that money going back and the income is coming into the general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the health department is part of the general fund.
Yeah, yeah, I thought, be sure, okay.
You, I think you've answered most of it. Anybody have any of the questions in regard to this? All right. You could call Matthew and let him know he's good.
That is everything on the list.
Thank you very much, you're appreciated.
We will be back here tomorrow.
Thank you, Beth.
Hopefully, similar format.
Great.
Well, we'll be at six tonight, but-
Where are you going? What do you mean tomorrow?
Well, for this type of meeting, we will be back at 3 o'clock tomorrow for the same concept.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
entertain motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.